This is the Board of Assessors meeting on April 24th, 2024. We are returning to open session at 10:48 a.m. So now that we have concluded item number 10A, or 11 with MS, we're going to return to our normal schedule, back to item six, which is new business. And do we have any invoices?
No.
Do we have any motor vehicle abatements?
We do. We have 2023 and we have 2024.
Did you send them a text to come over?
No, but I can't. You want them to come over now?
Well, we can do all this stuff while they're coming. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 2024 motor vehicle abatements in the amount of $6,887.30.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can sign that. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 2023 motor vehicle abatements in the amount of $569.43.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Melanie helped with 24. 2024.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, what's next? Oh, I gotta go this way, right?
Just stick with it. Nancy writes a lot. Sign real estate abatements for fiscal year 2024.
Do it the same way. If he gets out of line, I'll just poke him.
All righty. So here are the abatements, things you guys have already signed off previously.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 2024 real estate abatements in the amount of $7,549.87.
Step down and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two more in saying, is that right?
CPA, electric and water, yeah.
Those are all the same.
Yep, they're all.
Feel free to make a single motion there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
It's a boss. He likes that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the 2024 CPA abatements in the amount of $69.74.
I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're gonna do it individually?
You're gonna do it individually, which is her prerogative.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2024 electric light district abatements in the amount of $22.85.
All right, step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-two eighty-five.
Mr. Chairman,
Twenty-two eighty-five, yes.
I move that we approve the 2024 water district abatements in the amount of $341.66.
Step down and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All over?
Yep. Review discuss an act on two pilot agreements.
Okay, so.
I don't know if I'm really waiting for that.
Mr. Chairman.
This is what they need.
Well, it's this, it's a couple of things.
You okay?
You wanna?
Did you, you texted?
I did.
Mr. Chairman, since we're waiting for the town accountant and the tax collector.
On my way. OMW, Paul says.
I make a motion that we take agenda item.
Aye? What?
Yeah, the only thing we can do is aye, because I think they're involved with the other two.
Okay, then we take agenda item six, aye, out of order.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, here's my contract. And we have to renew it.
Rejected.
That's.
A big stamp.
Hey!
Square reject.
Nancy had my back on that one. She stamped it too.
So where did this contract come from?
That is my original one. It's out there on the website for anyone to see it.
So this is the exact same contract?
This is, I just printed it out so we'd have something to look at.
Okay.
So.
So what?
I'm not asking for anything more than continue on that, the way it's set up.
So is it something we should be doing in open session, or?
Well, if you do my reviews in open session, this is out on the website and I would imagine.
Was, when that contract was issued, did it issue? Other than the first year, did it? Is there language, I haven't read it lately. Is there language that says in succeeding years, there will be an increase of X? Is it a percentage?
It says no less than 2%.
Okay. Do you know what the, what? What is, or what? Is that the increase that pretty much across the board is being given? Is it 2%?
Two or two and a half. I think, I wanna think we might have got two and a half. Maybe Serena can probably say it.
Okay.
When she comes, because she'll know. But the only other thing I was asking for was to have my real estate.
Compensation starts with 2021 and then you get 2% in 2022 and 2023.
Yep. So June 30th, this is done.
Who was the expiration date of the contract?
30th of June.
Of this year?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we renew Stephanie's, we extend Stephanie's contract for three years.
I will second that for discussion. So what are you, are you asking for anything besides? You said something, I heard you saying something.
Yeah, so in the contract, it, I am to.
Says it will not renew automatically and terminate unless we.
I can hear about. So right here, I agree to hold my real estate license. So I would like the town to pay those fees.
How much are we talking about?
Like $900 a year. It's like $560 for my Realtor Association, who I'm associated with, you know, my high point, and it's 87 a quarter.
Eighty-seven?
A quarter for the MLS.
That's probably nine hundred.
And that, and I did put that on the budget sheet and I did talk about that already with the Finance Committee.
So seeing that's. At this point in time, have they approved initially the budget as it was submitted?
I think, they didn't tell me right then at the.
Well, yeah, they haven't actually voted on all, but they didn't say, we don't think you should do that. I didn't tell you to take anything out.
No.
The other thing is, the rate of increase, I think, should be comparable to whatever the town has given, so we do need to know.
What, the contract for the?
If, if, you're the only one that's getting 2% and everyone else is getting two and a half, we need to know that, I think.
I think that they kind of follow them. I think the accountant, you know, that, that follows the union numbers.
Yeah, but the question is, we get gazillion contracts. What's, what is?
Take two seconds to call Mike.
Yeah, well, Serena should know.
She should know. As long as she's coming, because I don't know, she.
I don't have a problem.
Know who I am, because I just put her phone number in yesterday.
I don't have a problem with the licensing fees. I think it's important. And you can't do business indictment as a Realtor anyhow, so it's not like you're getting something that's gonna allow you to make money, whatever.
But, but the sticky point for me is that since this is already in her contract, that by changing it, it is an effective raise. And, and that is, I think that it'd be sticky and other people saying, why is she getting that and, you know, we're not, that sort of thing. Serena, I agree.
Yeah.
What is the, for the employees in the town, what is their typical raise, either 2% or 2.5%?
So for FY25, it's, I believe, two and a half.
It's two and a half, okay.
With like clerical and.
So we are, us with contracts, do we follow those, follow like the clerical union?
In the past, we have.
In my opinion, Mike Mullins sends out an email in the beginning of the budget process, that he tells everybody basically that.
This is what you.
The percentage, yeah. So I believe it was two and a half for FY25, yeah.
So I think an argument can be made that if she's only getting a 2% increase, that would justify, I don't know how much, half a percent turns out to be. But you see what I'm saying? It's like, you're not getting the full two, two and a half, so instead, we're gonna pay for MLS. That, do you agree, or?
I would need to know who else has got licensure, licensure that is available, is of benefit to the town. It's certainly a benefit in doing the job you've got. All right.
We're discussing my contract. I put it on, so I mean, it would be an out of talking here with.
Feel free to grab it there and come up to the table.
Right? I mean, that's what we're supposed to handle it.
I don't know if contracts were in executive session.
No, they're not. They're in open session.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that.
I asked that question prepared.
Because I know when they, well, when the selectmen talk about negotiations with the police and fire and clerical, that's all the executive session.
Yeah, I just think my evaluation's right out there for everyone, the contracts are out there for everyone.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And I already talked to, like I said, Selectmen and Finance Committee, because I had put that little bit in there, so. I just know we have to start doing it because it's June 30th, this is the date.
The budget for the FY25 for our department as currently submitted includes a 2% wage increase and the license reimbursement.
And two and a half, whatever, whatever you guys told me.
And then I did put a placeholder for those reimbursements, I think they were like almost $1,800, $1,700 and change. Well, you have your education degree and then the additional ones that you were asking for. So I put it in there as a placeholder, because for budgeting, you know, we kind of need to know everything that might be coming down the line.
Yep. That's why I put it on that, because it was like the wish list or something.
Right, basically, yeah, exactly.
My personal experience, not working for the town, but has been that if I held a certain, for example, I was a notary public, both at the school and at the university. And there was recognition of that and they did pay the fees whenever it came up. I forgot how many years your notary thing is good for, but they provided me with the update for my, my impression stamp, because it's got a date, and a new logbook and the fee to renew, simply because it was a service that I was providing and it was valuable. So. I don't even know how much it was.
Talk again as old business next time. I just wanted to.
Okay.
Get it moving because.
You know what? How about, I make a motion that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
We have a motion already on the table.
Oh, that was to extend the contract for three years, but not, we're not, that's it, to extend it. Eric should be here at the next meeting when we talk about salary and benefits, is my, is what I'm saying.
I'm not following, so how can we extend the contract without the details of the contract?
Because it, in effect, freezes the contract where it is right now, so that's why my motion is only to extend the contract for three years and I can add to that. And benefits, salary and benefits will be discussed at the next meeting, so we carry it over.
I don't, I don't like that motion. It's too convoluted for me.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, we either extend the contract or we don't. I don't like the idea of extending a contract that doesn't have terms to it. If we're gonna extend it, we, I think we should do one or the other, either extend the contract or not, or act on it in the future.
Okay, well, whatever. I'm willing to move this to the next, table it until the next meeting. I can, all right.
So if you wanna withdraw your motion, or?
Well, there was no second, so there wasn't any motion.
No, I seconded it.
Oh, you did?
I did. I said I seconded it for the sake of discussion.
You withdraw the second.
I will draw my second.
And I withdraw the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that the discussion of the full-time assesses contract be tabled to our next regular meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we need to, I think that MLS one is sticky for me.
And I'm sure Eric would like to.
Yeah.
Have some weigh in on this.
I'd like to get some input from, like I said, other departments. Is it typical? Probably is typical. I, I don't, I guess what I wanna ask is, why was this in your contract to begin with? On the day one, when you were hired, why was this put into the contract?
Because that's what we use in the office.
No, 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 I, I mean.
Yes, in the contract.
Who, so it would have been the previous board, I suppose. When, when you were negotiating with them or discussing with them, what, what was the discussion about that?
I don't remember.
Did you, did you already have the MLS license and just went, oh, I'll just keep doing it?
I had the license and.
They made it a term in the contract.
Yeah.
She has to hold the license whether or not she gets reimbursed for it. She agreed to hold an active license to access MLS. And now all she's saying is, can I get reimbursed for that since I'm required to do it? But that.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
We need.
You can keep.
Okay, I'll put this in the pile.
Okay, put it in the pile.
Excuse me.
Okay, kindling.
Okay, so I guess we're on G, Mr. Chairman, pilot agreements?
Um, yes.
Okay, so if you wanna grab a couple of chairs and come up to the table?
We'll stick you up there.
We'll put you outside the window.
Can't run with the back of my head.
Hey, we're all barking and coughing. Okay, so. I copied you on the email that I sent out over the weekend indicating that the total taxes for MACS, which, that's the name of the
Thank you.
most recent owner of the solar project behind Rujo's farm.
Twenty-three twenty Williams?
No, that's the pig farm. We aren't there yet. We're, we're gonna get there. Because that's why it says pilot agreements. Okay, now. I, I sent this out to everybody. I'm gonna make sure that Mike has it for tonight. Not that they're gonna discuss it. It's not per se on the agenda. But I wanted to get this out as soon as I could, because we as a board have got to vote to release that information to the gentleman that I'm dealing with, Saval Shif, for this company. Because the owners, investors are chomping at the bit to find out what's the total taxes we're gonna owe. So that number, $1,248,497, over a 20-year period, is based on conversations, discussions that Stephanie and I had with Rich Gonzo, who is our tax advisor, and also our rep from the Department of Rameno, DLS. So it's front-end loaded, which means for the first 10 years, the highest taxes will be paid. And then, as you notice, when you go from 10 to 11, there's quite a drop. Okay, so when you look at the taxes from year one through 10, we will collect approximately 60% of the taxes owed. The remainder will be paid over the remaining 10 years. The reason we front-end load these is that when this system goes live, everything is brand new and theoretically, it should be generating maximum electricity. As the years go by and it depreciates and supposedly panels, as they get older, generate less, that reflects the decline in taxes. The bottom line is, and the most important thing is, what are the total taxes over 20 years? Now, one of the questions I asked our rep from DLS was, we front-end load these, so they're weighted for the first 10 years, and she says, DOR does not get involved with the payment schedule. Once you agree on the total payment over 20 years, then you can arrange those payments. So in the past, I worked with Carol Boragad and she would do the calculations and talk to our tax advisors, so forth and so on. So based on what I remember from what she did, because the other thing is, we can't find a lot of records. But since he was involved in knows how it was done, he's the one that gave us all this information as far as how we could determine this number. So what I need to know from either of you is, do you have any questions on that schedule, based on what I've told you so far?
No, I mean, I, I like the concept of it being front-loaded. Money today is worth more than money tomorrow.
Well, and that's how our current pilot agreements are. I mean, when somebody asks for a pilot agreement on a solar farm, that's new. This is a brand-new one, never had as pilot. And has not gone live yet. We tell them upfront, we have a boilerplate agreement. We front-end load the tax payment schedule and the main thing is, we all agree on the total taxes for, whether it's 15 or 20 years, the life of the agreement. Only one questioned that and they completely reversed it, which was amusing. And we've completely flipped, this is when Carol was here, and I said, that isn't how we do it. I told you, we front-end owed. The other thing we keep in mind as a community, these are investments. They are bought and sold all the time. We're in our third or fourth iteration of who owns this project. And we are not gonna get involved with, yeah, but if the taxes are low, then who buys it gets it? No, no, we. This is the amount of money it has been determined, determined, is going to be owed to the town and paid over 20 years. As far as selling and anything else, the agreement obligates anybody who owns it. So if you sell it with a pilot in place, that pilot continues to the end. So, so anyhow, that's basically how it works.
So now for the billing, so I believe that the way that this would work with the billing, and Stephanie, please, jump in whenever you'd like. So in December, because the pilot, yeah.
You gotta speak up.
Oh, oh. So in December, when we do the actual billing, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, I was just looking through, it's something we only do once a year, so I'll go back through my notes. The pilot payments are broken out along the last two payments of the year, go with the actuals. So Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, I, basically, what would happen would be, on a year-by-year basis, as we are going to make sure that we are ultimately billing this amount for each, this is the combined between two, two processes, is that right?
Yes.
So basically, you would just update the values at some point prior to calendar year end, before I do the actual billing, to make sure that the values of those properties reflect like a placeholder number, I guess, whatever number they have to be in order to ultimately result.
We have the values already.
Oh, perfect, even better.
When we met with our tax advisor, he's the one that looked at everything. And in order to determine the basic tax, he had to determine valuation over the next 20 years, or 20 years from the start date, which is fiscal 25.
That's not what Paul was saying. So, so do we have a mechanism that we can just say, this is a dollar amount?
It would be nice if we could figure that out, because how it's done now, there is a value on the preliminary, not the first year, because there's nothing there to go off of, but then.
So the preliminary would just be, each payment would basically be last year's taxes.
It'd be divided by four.
And then that's, that's.
And then we put the value for, through RRC, the personal property. So when that file goes over, they would use that for the next two quarters.
But that's the only mechanism we have? We can't override it?
I would think we can reach out to Vadar, our billing people, and find out.
So that would be the first choice.
Yeah, because it's a pain in the neck.
Number straight into the system and.
Right.
Forget about it.
Right, and just divide by four and.
Is that what's gonna have to happen is in, in future years, there's gonna be a tax rate, who knows what the tax rate's gonna be, and their value has to multiply times the tax rate.
It's all in the work that Rich did.
That number.
It's in the work that Rich did. It's in the worksheets, okay?
Does that change based on the person? It's gonna change based on the personal. There is a personal property. It'll change every year.
When you get to that point, and the main thing is, they get billed the first year, the first fiscal year. They pay $82,134 in total.
Right.
Okay? So however you've gotta adjust the bills to make that come out, you do it. But what I'm saying to you is, when we first said to our tax advisor, how do we figure this out? Literally, he did do this. Now, I can't get into that in detail in open session, but I can certainly show you what we have. Okay?
Absolutely.
So I think the main thing is, right now, those are the details of the billing and everything else. So what I'm really looking for right now is, if you have any questions about this payment schedule, because we've got to vote to, in effect, accept this payment schedule, so that I can send it on to the gentleman I'm dealing with. Now, if they don't agree, then they gotta get back to me with whatever it is and we gotta look at this again. Once they agree on the total taxes and we're all in agreement, I can finish that pilot agreement, give it to the board, a selectman to review, and they haven't said anything in opposition to these taxes yet.
Okay.
But if the owner says, oh, well, we gotta do whatever, before any recalculations done, I'm sure we're gonna be talking to our tax advisor. But once both parties agree, the town and the owner, operator, whatever, the pilot agreement gets put together, goes to the board of selectmen, terms and conditions are pretty much boilerplate. The main thing is the tax schedule payment. And when the board of selectmen says, looks okay to us, we'll put it on the warrant, then that agreement, in effect, goes to town meeting, gets approved, hopefully, then they can sign it and we've got an executed agreement. Okay? The details of how to bill it and everything else, that's gonna have to all be worked out. It's not part of the pilot agreement.
Right.
Okay?
Right, so it's you and me working together on
Yeah.
maybe the best way to do it. It would be easier to not revise bills like I have to do on some of them to get the dollar amount, so maybe.
Right, because I know Vadar said they basically just work on value and rate, so I don't think there's anything in their system.
Okay.
They can change the.
I mean, it's fine the way I think it's done.
But, um.
But.
We could also, I can write an Excel formula, where year by year, we could just go down the schedule and plug in the total amount that's to be done that year minus the preliminaries, and then it would, basically, the only things we would have to fill in on a year-to-year basis would be the amount built during the preliminaries, the total amount to be built for the year, and the personal.
What value, what value you need to.
Yeah, the personal property rate, and we could do it in reverse and use that formula to cause that, to spit out what the value needs to be, based on those parameters.
No, we can do it as long as before the bill file.
Yeah, no, that'd be.
Yeah, we can work on that ourselves, I think.
Yeah, and my only questions, I do, I do like it. I like everything about it. My only questions were, is there a specific formula or percentage that are in relation? I'm just curious.
Okay, when the spreadsheets were done by our tax advisor, and they're broken down over 20 years, I took those actual numbers and because we're gonna front-end load them, that's why the, that. If you look at the first column, seventy-eight thousand, all right. The next column is first, FEL, front-end load. The second one is the second front-end load. I took the information, plus you, from the worksheet, and looked at how we have done front-end loading in the past. Then I looked at it again and said, we aim to get roughly 60% of the taxes in the first 10 years, or if it's 15 years, it's still close to 10 years. And when I looked at that, I had to go back and come up with a second front-end load to get, it's like fifty-nine point dun-da-dun-da-da. So I got it as close to 60 as I could. And that formula for front-end loading is pretty much based on what was put in place before I was an assessor. But in looking back and trying to come up with something that is fair to the town, but also fair to the people paying the taxes, that, if you will, 60, 40, or close to it, is what I was seeing. Again, I didn't find a lot of records to help me with this.
Right.
And when Carol was doing this, she would work with our tax advisor, and they'd come up with this, and she'd hand a schedule and say, take a look at this, tell me what you think. And I'd usually say, tell me roughly how you came up with it, and she told me. So that's what you're looking at.
Okay.
Okay? And again, DOR, DLS said, they're not concerned about how you set up the payment as long as the total taxes are reflected in what the agreement is, what your basic numbers are, and both parties agree, so.
Okay, then my only other question would be that the total amount, the one million, two forty-eight, four ninety-seven, is, how, what was that number based on? Was it based on the production, anticipated profit, and stuff like that?
No, it's based on evaluation of the personal property.
Oh, that's how it's based on? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Now, obviously, there were clauses in the pilot agreement, the boilerplate, that cover certain things, like if there was a hailstorm and everything got wiped out, if there's a hailstorm and some of the stuff got wiped out, is it going to be replaced? Is the damage significant that would increase the value of what was there? Because if that is the case, then you've got to look at the tax agreement again. But there are terms and conditions that indicate, I think it's, I'll describe it as dollar value that would cause a change in the tax agreement.
Okay.
Okay? But that's to cover damages or who knows what, okay? All right. If at the end of, or before we approached the, I would think, the 18th, 19th year, the owner is going to be saying to the town, either, we're going to replace this, or we're going to improve this, or we're going to remove it. But obviously, when the 20th year is done, long before that, we should be talking, if they're going to continue and replace, there'll be a successor agreement.
Right.
Okay?
Absolutely. No, that all makes perfect sense.
You got anything?
I do not. Nope, everything's been answered.
Okay, so, that's fourteen twenty and fifteen twenty-two Williams. That's the, I have asked for three placeholders. The third one is Brook Street, and I don't see that getting anywhere near discussion for a town meeting in June, hopefully by the fall town meeting. So that leaves.
Do we need to have a motion number?
Yeah, we should. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Assessors approve the tax payment schedule for MACS Solar Farm, located at fourteen twenty and fifteen twenty-two Williams Street, combined. Total amount of one million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars, and that we submit this to the owner of the solar farm for review.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? All this in favor?
Aye.
Then there's an aye.
Obviously, if there's any changes that come down the pike, we're going to be talking about them anyhow. Now, ISM Solar, twenty-three twenty Williams Street. Our tax advisor is working on this one. I expect we're going to come up with a similar schedule. Oh, they want 20 years. Now, they've been up and running and paying taxes. I don't know what the rate is they're paying. I, that's strictly taxes, not pilot agreement. They, they've seen the pilot agreement, they know the terms and conditions. ISM Solar also has solar farms on Richmond Hill, and they have pilot agreements in place. So the man I'm dealing with on this one, Sam Van Dam, he's waiting to find out what the schedule looks like. So when I get that information from our tax advisor, we'll prepare a schedule, just like we've done for this one. And I'm hoping I will have that number soon, so that I can get that out. So of the three placeholders I asked for, I'm confident definitely one is going to be there, and I'm hoping this one's going to make it. If for some reason the owners decide that we don't like the taxes, we're not going to hold things up. It'll go to the next town meeting, okay? But that's where we are with this one, so. And this one's a little different, simply because they've been up, running and generating for several years. This is the solar farm that ISM Solar took the town to Superior Court, and we won, all right? And, and it was over the terms and conditions. They had included real estate taxes, and there was no town meeting vote, which is what the judge ruled on, so there was no agreement. So we've got beyond that. So my, the next step for us is, we will meet with the tax advisor, we will go over the work, put together the schedule, get it to our board, and that's where we are.
Sounds great. If I can put off, please just let me know.
All right, we're good with that.
Done with the pilot agreements. Then, look to item H, which is Review Discuss Act on Change in the Age of Senior Exemptions, sixty-five years old. So, as you probably know, I went to the board of selectmen meeting last week, and based on information I got through Stephanie, that after all the work we did to try to increase participation in the senior tax exemptions, the number of seniors that actually took advantage of that went down from thirty-nine to thirty-five. So, based on what I said the previous year, I said we would look at it and see if, you know, if there was a problem, if too many people were taking advantage of it, and we would revisit the age limit this year. So I would say that since we have not seen an increase in the number of people that are getting the senior tax exemption, that it would be appropriate to be able to lower it from seventy to sixty-five. Any thoughts on that, Nancy?
No, I was at the selectmen's meeting when it came up, and it was.
And I have to ask, you know, I guess, an apology. I didn't recall that last year it came from the board of assessors. I thought it was something I just did with the board of selectmen. But they asked it to go through the board of assessors to, for us to give a recommendation, so I'm sorry if I overstepped my bounds there.
So I was, I was at the meeting, I heard the presentation, and, and I don't know how many meetings of various boards we've been at, and the concern has been expressed about the difficulty some of our residents are having paying their taxes. And so we've looked into different things to see what we can do. We've had some educational programs to get the word out with the programs we currently have. And so, I, I support doing this, I mean.
Okay.
I just have a couple of concerns.
Yeah.
So when we were doing the FY25 budget this year, we had put in an overlay amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. So I just want to back up to fiscal year 24. When we were closing the books and doing the recap and setting the tax rate, we had put in an overlay amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred, the same amount. When we did the calculation with the recap, it automatically calculates, and it forced us to put in one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twelve. So the recap forcing us to do more than what we initially had planned on is one concern. So I don't think the one twenty-five, two hundred is enough, based on that information. And during the fiscal year 24, we actually exempted a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So that, in line, falls with that same concern, that the one twenty-five, two hundred's not enough. And then my other concern is, if the age does get lowered to sixty-five, then all of those additional residents that could possibly take advantage of the exemptions, how much would that also increase the overlay that we need to project? So as I'm trying to balance the budget, I would suggest to move the one twenty-five right off the bat to one thirty to cover that additional, so we don't get close. And then if you do decide to change the age, we would also need to increase the overlay amount based on, you know, the additional residents that could take advantage of exemptions.
Let me start by asking a question, which is, does not change the total amount of taxes that we, that we're going to collect?
It just affects our levy limit.
How, how would it affect our levy limit?
So the more that we say we're not going to collect, that automatically like decreases the levy limit that's out there, because we have a set amount, and then we're going to say we're not going to collect a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we have to, if it was balanced, you know, we have to like make up.
So our exemptions are actually counted towards the levy limit?
Absolutely. Yep, so when I was, you know, planning my Excel sheet, and I, so it's one twenty-five, we'll just say it's one twenty-five even. And I changed it to one thirty, it automatically put our levy into another five thousand deficit.
So, how could we, the numbers you just said, trying to juggle them all in my head, but it sounded like it was a couple thousand dollars off, and so like you said, we budgeted for one twenty-five, and we did one twenty-three. Is that correct?
So we initially budgeted for one twenty-five. When I filed the recap, it forced us to budget one twenty-seven. And then the actual exemptions came in at one twenty-three.
Right, that's what I'm trying, the actual versus what we budgeted for, is about a two thousand dollar difference.
Right.
But yet, I know that just in senior tax exemptions, we had four fewer, that'd be four thousand dollars under budget. Were we significantly over-budget on other categories or something like that?
Our abatements, but we had a lot of abatements this year.
And that's the overlay. Yeah, the overlay is the abatements, yeah.
Okay. So I'm still in favor of, I mean, we're not talking a lot of money. We're also talking, like I said, thirty-nine, thirty-five now, people that are seventy-plus. I can't fathom, you keep in mind that the senior, the senior tax exemption is a senior tax exemption for seniors that are struggling. It's not everybody.
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand, right. But it's going to be something.
It will be something, but I don't expect it to be, say, more than five or 10 or something like that. I don't expect it to be.
Five or 10 residents?
Yeah.
Times a thousand each?
I'm guessing, it's, it's a complete guess, but I'm saying that I don't think it's, it's not going to be fifty or a hundred or something like that. It's not going to be enormous amounts of money.
Now, you said you got a report from, you got a report showing how many people were over sixty-five, or sixty-five between.
Yeah, so, aligned with something else we're trying to figure out, we did get a census report, and the homes with residents aged seventy and above is seven hundred and twenty. And then the homes with residents sixty-five and above is one thousand thirty. So there's essentially three hundred homes.
You said seven hundred and.
Seven twenty, and yep, and then a thousand thirty.
So roughly half as many. So I would think at most, you would get half of thirty-five. That would be, I think that would be your upper, but I don't think it would be that much, because younger people tend to be working and such. So, under seventeen, does that sound fair?
I mean, my concern is that the overlay of one twenty-five, two hundred is too low, so.
Oh, I, I probably agree with you on that, and, and the fine.
But I really.
And the board of selectmen won't be happy to hear that.
Yeah, that it has to increase, yeah.
But it's not a whole lot. If you figure that you've got roughly, what, seven hundred and twenty currently eligible households, and you have thirty-four active participants, is that right? Thirty-five. Thirty-five, so if you figure that that gives you about a 4.8% utilization rate, roughly, of eligible. Okay, that's another way to do it, yeah. So then if you figure that you have a thousand twenty minus, so what's that, about three hundred and fifty? Three hundred, three hundred and fifty houses, so. In the fifty range, I think. Yeah, so you'd be looking, you'd be looking.
It's, yeah, three hundred and ten houses.
Okay, so you have three hundred and ten houses, what did I just say, a 4.8% utilization? Yeah, so, yeah, about fifteen people.
Yeah.
Fifteen. Fifteen. Fifteen additional. Yeah, that's wholly true of that same general. If it's the same, I would suspect.
One five, well, five zero. Okay.
Fifteen extra.
At a thousand dollars.
Like fifty-two total.
Those are potential applicants. That doesn't mean they're all going to get approved.
No, no, we're, so, you know, we're trying to take a guess here.
No, no, I understand that.
We've got thirty-five people we approved. So assuming that all the same mix of people with the same mixes of incomes and everything, it should come out to about fifteen more people. But then again, last year, we thought by raising the, the income limits, we assumed, oh, we're going to get more people applied, but it ended up being less. So this is a best guess at best.
Yeah.
So, but I would say, yeah, how about if we can plan for fifty, if you're looking for budgeting purposes?
At a thousand.
Yeah, fifty thousand for senior tax exemption, yeah.
Right, but the additional fifteen people is an additional fifteen thousand.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
The thirty-five we've.
Oh, you want, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty altogether? I'm sorry. I don't know if it's the accent or the echo in here.
How much was the abatement overlay?
One twenty-five or one twenty-seven or one thirty.
The recap had us do one twenty-seven.
So it would be what, that plus fifty thousand? No, no, plus fifteen.
One five.
Sorry, excuse me, so.
Yeah, I know.
So we're talking fifty people potentially in total.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So the total overlay would be a hundred and forty-two thousand. The one twenty-seven plus one five thousand.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, do you guys mind doing a vote on that, so I can officially?
No, it's a world.
A hundred and forty-two thousand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we notify the town administrator that in anticipation of an additional fifteen residents qualifying for the senior, is it senior abatement? Is that what we call it?
Senior tax exemption.
Senior tax exemption. That the overlay amount for FY25 be budgeted at one forty-two?
Yes.
Hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And if more is.
Thank you.
Did you need a second motion to do the? We do. Oh, you already did that for change. No, only to do that. So, we need to discuss the details of how to go about it, but Nancy, can I have a motion to recommend that we place the warrant?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Assessors request that an article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant to provide for changing the, to provide for lowering the age limit for the senior tax exemption from seventy to sixty-five years of age.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion?
Oh, should I say effective with the FY25?
No, it's just put it on the.
Okay, all right.
Just step down and second, any discussion? Um, so I'll step down second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So uh logistically, um, I wasn't even thinking about this, that um I actually made plans for this evening. Um, do we need to go to the board of selectmen this evening?
I wouldn't suggest, yeah, somebody.
Uh, if you're gonna go somewhere, just uh ask Mike if they can take it out of order, because they did that. I forgot, somebody had to go somewhere.
That was me, but
That was last, oh, him again. Oh, it's him again. Yeah.
Um, but they have it like way out.
Well, there's a lot of stuff there, yeah.
Um, so I guess I will talk to Mike and/or Peter and try to get in there.
That's a, that's a good idea. If you talk to Mike, um, I talked to him today, because I have one request that's gonna be read tonight, and uh frankly, I'm feeling very good. I don't think
You sound terrible.
Yeah. I sound better than I feel. Um, so I talked to Mike, and he told me that tonight, he doesn't anticipate there to be much discussion on the specifics of the articles. It's more of just like a first reading, and that they'll discuss them in greater detail at, they have a meeting, I think it's Monday the sixth. I think he said, I might have misheard.
But your warrant article is already there.
No, well, mine, I submitted it um April first, but it didn't make it into their first batch or whatever they looked at prior, so I heard that they will discuss it tonight. Um, so there, he said there's not much discussion, but I just submitted some
But they are gonna submit they're, they're gonna put it on your warrant, the warrant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're gonna go through the recommendations. I just wrote up a couple paragraphs of correspondence, in case they have questions about it. They'll have kind of my reasoning and why I requested what I did. Um, so in a worst-case scenario, if you can't make it, you might be able to just submit correspondence as well.
No, no, I, I think the thing is, you know, I'm busy until seven, and then after that, I can probably come down here, or I can cut it short if I have to. But the meeting's tonight at
At six, yeah, after seven's probably fine.
So I think if I just come here after seven, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Uh, who actually writes it, though? Who would write the verbiage? Was that Mike?
Oh, I
The verbiage.
To
Oh, I would say look back at the last time we did this.
I, I agree. Who is responsible?
It's the assessors.
To do that? Um, is it her to do that?
Well, it's the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, just
Yeah, you guys, it's a board.
Look at the previous town meeting that got voted, all right, and we'll work something out.
But it has to be done for tonight?
That's what I'm saying, it's to be done for tonight. As far as I know.
Right? Yeah, I would say
I don't have pilot agreements for tonight, folks. But I got permission. I wanna give
So we just need to have a placeholder.
I believe
A summary, yeah.
Yeah.
At this point, it is.
In-depth conversation. I think they're having a special meeting on, is it next Monday or
I don't know, he didn't tell me that.
I believe, I believe I could be mistaken. Uh, I believe that they're having a special meeting to
I will double-check with Mike on how long the meeting is over, and make sure that we follow the right procedures.
Yeah, they opened the warrant for us for that, you know, and the main thing is, just like I said about the pilot agreements, I've got three swats. All right, I'm not gonna have three pilot agreements, and one is probably gonna go away, but at least I can say, okay, I got the numbers for one, the other one I will have. And actually, until you get to the drop-dead date, when they say, we gotta print, we gotta put this warrant together, we got some breathing room?
Yeah, it's only like two, three weeks. It's not too much.
Okay, um, so with that being said, I'm gonna move on. Is there any public input? I actually have people here. We never have people in any public
They're here because they have to be.
Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Best public input we have gotten all year. It's the only public input we've gotten all year.
Okay.
Um, any correspondence?
No.
Um, minutes?
No, we have to sit down, because I get some done, and then I don't think we look them over, but you're gonna have a pile like this minutes the next time.
Okay. Um, we should, they need to be approved in a timely manner, you know, how far back we're going.
No.
Okay. Um, else there are people that will
Don't say.
It's like, oh, it's like speaking of the devil.
Hmm. You just, you just keep that going.
Your step button.
Mr. Moore is our chairman now.
All right, congratulations.
Oh, and that, okay.
Entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're adjourned at
Eleven forty-two.
Eleven forty-three. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.